Welcome to the March 26, 2024, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please read the rules of speech?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions or requests must address a pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the date.
Thank you, City Clerk. Counsel, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 13th and February 27th, 2024, 6:30 PM meetings?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Meetings are approved. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I've got a couple housekeeping items I'd like to present prior to getting into the meeting. First one is, staff is requesting to table item 9B, which is ordinance number 8, 2024, and we'd like to table that to the 23 April, 2024 meeting.
Counsel, can I have a motion to table 9E?
9B.
I'm sorry, 9?
B, Bravo.
B, 9B.
To 4/23/24, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. The 23rd of April, 24.
Second.
I have that motion from Member Nelson, that second from Member Stokel. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? 9B is tabled.
Mayor, I think you were thinking ahead because we'd also like to table 9E, which is CUP number 1-2024, which is TRG Self-Storage, and staff would like to table that, the applicant's request, to 9 April, 24.
See, I wasn't wrong, I was just early.
No, you were just ahead of us.
Okay, Counsel, can I have a motion to table 9E?
Seven moved. Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say yes?
And that will be to the next meeting.
Okay, okay. All right, add it to that motion. City Clerk, you get that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's try that again. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? 9E is tabled.
We have no special presentations nor board and commissions. We are to petitions and requests.
All right, petitions and requests from the public? All right, with that, while we're, yeah, come on up. That's what you do, you just come on up.
Yes, sir, my name is Len. I have a problem. I live just around the corner from Life Point Ministries, and it's, they're supplying homeless people with places to stay, food and clothing and all this. Well, they're also stealing my neighborhood blind. I've had five bicycles ripped off there, over $650 worth of bicycles. The lady across the street from me had to put up a $1,500 security fence to keep people from sleeping in her carport. I have a rental house right next door to my house, and I had, I've caught people four times sleeping in there. I've had them urinating against my mailbox, I've had them between my fence and my trailer, defecating. I'm really tired of this. It's costing me an arm and a leg for this. I used to work at the Salvation Army, so, when I was out there, and I know how to deal with the home, well, I don't know how to, but I have some ideas for here, and I called up the pastor, and I asked to talk to him, and I talked with him, and I shared my ideas, and I said otherwise I was going before City Council. And his words were, and I'll abbreviate them, "F you. I know the mayor and the police chief, and they support me. So you do whatever you want to do, they'll do nothing." Well, I finally got sick of this after my child, who's 10 years old, just had his last birthday present ripped off, his bicycle. He can't do anything now. I mean, I've got so many bicycles, this is getting ridiculous. They're coming into my front porch, and you guys are the ones that gave him a license. And this usually happens when they're showering people and clothing them, and they don't move them on their way, they just shower and clothe them, and then they all go a little ways away, and then they come back again, and they swarm that area. I mean, it's turning my area into a junkyard. I had him the other day, I called because there was a lady sleeping right next to the railroad tracks. The day before that, there was another person sleeping right in the woods right there on Capron. This is getting ridiculous, and I know it's a problem nationwide, but we have some rules in Titusville where camping is not allowed, you're not allowed to just make a home in the woods, and nobody's doing anything or following this up. Now, when I got an 84 or 81-year-old lady next door to me having to put up a $1,500 fence, and she's on social security, you know we got a problem, and nobody's addressing it. We have a problem with this, and I can't afford another bicycle for my child. I'm a disabled person, too. What am I supposed to do, just keep getting ripped off? I've never come before, you guys, and I've lived here since 1984, and I'm tired of this. You know, one of the cute things they could do is as soon as he feeds and clothes the people, is tell them they got to disperse on the other side of 50 or the other side of, the other street, but they all run down to US 1, to those parks over there. They go to the woods on Capron, they go to the woods across from the library behind it. That was my time, I know.
Yeah, but hold on.
I'm just tired of this, I mean.
I get that, I get that, we clearly have that, and so would I be tired of that. And this is, as you said, Titusville, and it's all over the country, but this isn't a place where we say, hey, that's okay, that's not okay. If people are stealing bikes, that's a crime, if people are peeing and whatever else they're doing that they're not supposed to be doing, that's a crime. I get the homeless issue, but I also get that you have a right, and the people of our city have a right, to be safe, to be clean, to not be stolen from, so whoever said they know me good, tell them to talk to me, we're not going to put up with that. Now, that being said, I'm not taking anything away from our homeless issue, it's something that needs to be dealt with, we're doing our best. Now, I need a couple questions. Tell me exactly where this is? Where are you, what's the street, give me an idea, maybe you guys can tell me, but...
That I live?
Well, where this is happening?
This is happening, they're coming, this is happening on Coquina Avenue, we got hookers walking up and down the street now, not at all times. We have homeless people, too, that are always walking up, and they're doing whatever they want to do, you know, just, and I've called the police for my bike stolen, I know, I've called the police for my bike stolen, I've called them for the people sleeping in the woods, I've called them for that. There are probably 100 just for me. My neighbors are, I'm scared, too, because my house could get vandalized, because I'm on TV, because this pastor has, according to him, has a lot of pull, and I'm worried. But I need something done, because I have two children under the age of 18, and I need their protection. My daughter has given food to them people because she thinks it's the right thing to do, which I understand, except she doesn't know who these people are, and she doesn't know what can happen to them, happen to her from them, you know? There are some sick people out here.
Okay, and I will, I will say that we will continue to do our best for the homeless. I will tell you that I'm in an organization that's going to do a 7:00 AM homeless breakfast, Saturday morning, it's once a week downtown, but then they moved on. City Manager, is this where we will just refer this to Police Chief and go from there? Because clearly, we, all I can do is hear you and make sure that something is done. At the same time, I know that we have done a really good job, I've even had people compliment us, on cleaning up the parks, and cleaning up's a bad word when you're talking about homeless people, but moving homeless people from the parks and hanging out, this is the first I've heard of this sort of situation. I do drive down there a lot, and I'll pay attention to that, but I'm hearing words, you know, like hookers or prostitutes and the other things you talked about, and clearly, that's not something that I've been familiar with.
Then you haven't heard that at the park there on US 1 and Coquina right down there? I went there the other day to visit with a friend of mine that came down, and we just wanted to sit by the ocean, found some syringes out there. You know, this is my city, I've heard of the citizens, and you said, "Talk to the Police Chief?" Well, I haven't talked directly to the Police Chief, but I've talked to every police officer, and they tell me that they've notified the Police Chief. Well, I just asked him, and he said this is the first he heard about it, and he took down my address. How many times and how many months do I have to go? This has been going on nine months.
Well, I will say this, I've known about it maybe nine minutes, so we're going to see what we do with it.
Okay, I'll let it go there.
Yeah, we'll let it go there.
Thank you.
Perhaps.
Go ahead, Member Nelson.
Maybe some extra patrols in that area would be good.
Yeah, and that's where I would let Police Chief decide what they're going to do with patrols and all that stuff. It doesn't take much to drive by there and see what's going on, because I go by there probably every day, two or three times, it's kind of on the way. So I will be by there personally, just to see what I see. Is Thursday night particularly bad?
No, come by when they're doing the showers?
Yeah, Thursday, that's a Thursday night.
See, it changed for a long...
Oh, does it change? I didn't know that. What is it?
It's Thursday.
Yeah, okay, Thursday night, okay, I will, I will, I'll be there, I say to do it, I'll be there. And that was petitions and requests, right? Okay, I'm going to do my own little thing here. Troop 359, stand up for me if you would. All of you with Troop 359, anybody, everybody, if your friends, parents, it doesn't matter. Very good. Does one of you want to come up and stand there? I know you don't, but that's good training for you. All three of you all come up, you do it as a team. Good idea. Come on, we won't be long, come on up. Come on up. They all look like they can't wait to speak. One at a time, give us your names, and I don't know if you have ranks in this, do you? Do you, okay, your name and your rank.
I'm Jasper, and I'm a Star Scout.
Very good, next?
My name is Violy, and I'm a Scout.
Okay.
My name is Dylan, and I'm a First Class.
Very cool, how long have you guys been in the Scouts?
I've been in Scouts for like eight, nine years.
Fantastic. Rest of you about the same, you've been there a long time?
Nine.
All right, wow. So what's your favorite thing in the Scouts? What do you like to do in the Scouts? Field trips, camping? Say again?
Camping.
Camping? Where do you guys go camping, and then I'll leave it at that?
We're going to Lake Haida Springs.
Oh, cool, cool. Make sure you go when it's not July or August, I would say that's a good idea. Anyway, thank you guys for bringing them, and thank you guys for being here, appreciate you. That's right, they're, they're... City Manager.
Yes, sir, we are to consent agenda items A through E. City Council, do you have any questions of staff for these consent items?
I see none, sir.
City Council, you want to pull any of the consent for additional discussion?
I see none.
City Clerk, do you have any cards for consent? Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Consent agenda item A, approved the equipment vehicle camera systems and GPS monitoring. Consent agenda item 8B, accept the FY 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Consent agenda item 8C, approved change orders number 3 and 4 for the Blue Herring Water Reclamation Facility Clarifier. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the award of the contract for utility contractors, and consent agenda item 8E, approve the phone replacement project.
Very good. Counsel, any of these you wish to speak to? I understand there's no cards, but I'll call the cards anyway. Stand my routine, no cards? Member Nelson?
Move to approve consent agenda item 8A through 8E.
I have a motion.
Second.
Member Cole, second, roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Consent agenda is passed, City Manager.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a further amendment to the agenda and move item 11A, which is Performance Bond for Tranquility Development, to now.
Yes, do we need to make a motion on that?
Seven moved.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say yes? Opposed? Moving it up.
We are now on 11A, which is Performance Bond Tranquility Development. On 27 February, 2024, the City Council approved advisability for staff to review the request to reduce the amount to the performance bond for the tranquility development. Staff analyzed the request, status of the bonds, status of the infrastructure improvements, remaining cost estimates, and the amount of the new bond. We agree with the estimate to reduce the bond to $865,000. Staff's here to answer any questions that you may, whoops, $1,038,000, I'm sorry. Staff's here to answer any questions that you may have about this, and I believe there's some in the room that may want to speak on this item.
Staff, you, anyone to toss our way?
Only if you have any questions.
With that, I feel like we discussed this at the last meeting, and I think the one thing we said, we'd like to expedite this, and if there's something down the road we can add or remedy, I really wish we could expedite this a little bit, but at the same time, I think this is pretty much a basic issue, that they're wanting to lower the bond for Phase 1, and that this is a practical use situation. So Counsel, anything else you guys want to add? Call the cards? No cards? Member Nelson?
Move to reduce the amount of performance bond for Phase 1 subdivision to $865,000.
1.38, I think.
Wait a minute, oh, wait a minute, okay, say again.
$1,038,000.
Okay, $1,038,000.
We just took a little more from you, that's all.
Sorry about that.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, and a, Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole, roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you, guys, I wish everything we ever did was this simple. Thank you, guys. City Manager.
Back to item 9A, under a second reading public hearings, this is ordinance number 7, 2024, Development Review Fee. City Attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 7, 2024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Development Review Procedures Manual, Section 7.2, Land Development Fees, by including an expedited plan review fee, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation under the code, and an effective date.
On March 6, 2024, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this item 6.1. The City of Titusville offers a number of significant services to its residents, business owners, and visitors, for which it charges fees that should be commensurate with the costs incurred to the city to perform those services. The city will offer an expedited review service for site plans as completed by artificial intelligence for an additional fee as charged by the city contractual agreement with the AI firm. The draft ordinance proposes an additional 1,000 fee for this expedited site review. Brad's here to answer any questions that you may have on this year's final public hearing.
Oh, Counsel? Counsel has nothing, any cards?
No, sir.
Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 7-2024 Development Review Fee.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Nelson, a second by Member Stokel, roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
9A passes unanimously, City Manager.
As a reminder, 9B has been tabled to the 23rd of April, 24. We are now on 9C, ordinance number 9, 2024, the Soil Amendment, and the City Attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number 9, 2024, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to require soil amendments prior to installation of landscaping in specified situations by amending Sections 30-303 Standards, 30372 Planting Standards, and 371 Definitions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation under the code, and an effective date.
On March 6, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as presented 7.0. On September 28, 2021, City Council directed staff to review trees in commercial parking lots, including the soil that's used. Soil amendments may be required to plant viable in some areas that have imported filth soils or have been impacted by paving. The ordinance requires a soil amendment when determined to be, when determined by a qualified representative. Brad's here to answer any questions that you have on this ordinance number 9, 2024.
Just questions? Counsel? We're very question, not very questioning today. We ask more questions normally, guys, I want you to know that. That's true, we've been there before on this one. All right, I see no questions, cards? Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 9-2024 of Soil Amendment.
Second.
We have a motion by Member Nelson, a second by Member Cole, roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, passes unanimously, City Manager.
Moving on to the quasi judicial portion of the agenda, we're now on 9D, the City Attorney will read quasi procedures for Counsel.
During this public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the City Council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the City Clerk. City Clerk, of all persons wishing to speak for the City Council, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
For staff and any applicants, ensure that all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
If there's anyone present who has not signed on an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City Clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit, or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinion shall be disclosed.
I see none. Thank you.
Onto item 9D, which is Easement Vacation Application 1-2024, 300 Cheney Highway. An application has been received by Mr. Rodney Honeycutt, on the applicant's behalf of John Michael Daniel and Cindy Rose Daniel. The property owner is at 300 Cheney Highway, is requesting a vacation of a portion of existing public utility easement in order to create a stormwater pond. Staff is here to answer any questions, this easement does meet the criteria for a vacation.
Staff?
I'll just say, for the record, we have no objection to the request to vacate this portion of the easement. There were no objections from any of the other agencies and departments. And to give you an orientation of where this is located, if you look on page 222 of your packet, you'll see an illustration of an aerial of where this is located in Titusville off of Capron and Cheney. The survey is located on page 224 of your packet, and this request is to only vacate a portion of the recorded easement in the back of this property. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Counsel? Any questions? I see no questions or comments, cards?
We have one card, it's Rodney Honeycutt.
Good evening, Chairman, Councilmembers. Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. And so I have a client that wants to build a professional office building on this site, and he has the property under contract, and then found out that there was supposed to be an easement on the east side when a right-of-way was vacated some time ago. The reason it was tabled from the last meeting is we found out that easement was never recorded. So we recorded the easement, so now we can vacate a portion of it. And so I don't, I think Brad explained, we have no objection from any of the utility companies, either Titusville or the private companies, and so if there's any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Rodney? Yes, Member Nelson?
Is that the area where the lawnmower shop is?
Yes, keep them running, it's right behind it.
Okay, it's in front of that?
Yes.
Yes. They used to have the nursery there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what really happened to that, but that's not there anymore. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Honeycutt? I see none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other cards? Member Nelson?
Move to vaca, easement application, vacation application number 1-2024, 300 Cheney Highway.
And we need to, in that motion, approve related resolution number 2, 2024.
Sorry about that. And approve resolution?
Number 2, 2024.
Number 2, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes, passes unanimously, City Manager.
Just as a reminder, we have tabled 9E to 9 April. There is no ordinance first reading, we've completed our old business. We are on 12A, which is the Termination American Rescue Plan, subaward agreement between the city and the Christian Life Center, Life Center Academy. On March 28, 2022, the city entered into a federal sub-agreement award with Christian Life Center of Titusville. The Life Center Academy in the amount of $122,000 for its enrichment program located at the Gibson Center with an expiration date of September 30, 2024. Subsequent, on 17 October, 2023, the Neighborhood Services Department was notified, the agency of their lack of performance regarding the expenditures, documentation, and missing records. regarding the expenditures, documentation, and missing required reports. However, since that date, staff has not received any further communications from the agency, nor has the agency acted to rem- remedy the non-compliance. As a result, the agency has reached a critical state of non-compliance with more than eighty-nine thousand dollars left of unexpended money with the sub-agreement set to expire on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. On March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Life Center Academy was notified of the intent to terminate advising no additional remedies to be considered and scheduled the item to be heard at this meeting. Staff is seeking council's authorization to terminate the subaward agreement effective immediately and adjust the agency's award of the expended amount as of this date. And they've expended thirty-two thousand, thirty-nine dollars and forty-six cents, which ha- which has been accounted for properly. Terry's here to answer any questions that you may have on this termination agreement.
Member Robin- oh, excuse me, Vice Mayor Robinson. Well, they put it up.
No, uh, uh, this has happened a couple of times, uh, that I see, and it, uh, it, doesn't please my heart, so to speak, but is it any way that, uh, we can kinda do our best to get this money back into the, um, those that need it the most, uh, some helping the homeless, uh, situation that the gentleman was talking about. I don't know what you are anticipating on doing with it. I know that we have, uh, a lot more liberty, if you will, to do things with it, but, uh, I would, uh, ask that give consideration of somehow if there's any ideas out there to, to help us with the, the homeless situation or those in need. And I know that you will do your best, but, uh, I just wanted to make, um, make it known that, uh, we wanna try to put it back out there if we possibly can. Right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any cards?
Yes, sir.
Member Nelson?
Move to approve the termination of the ARPA subaward agreement with Life Center Academy, adjust the subaward to equal amount expended in the amount of thirty-two thousand, thirty-nine dollars and forty-six cents.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. And Member Nelson and Member Cole, roll call vote.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City Manager?
Onto item twelve B, which is the FY two thousand and twenty-three City of Titusville Community Redevelopment Agency Annual Report. Accept the FY two thousand and twenty-three annual report for the City of Titusville's Community Redevelopment CRA and approve the transmittal of the report to the CRA creating municipality, the City of Titusville, to meet the thirty-one March deadline. After the financial information has been completed, which it has, it'll be added to the report and posted as required by Florida statutes, and currency copies will be sent to the taxing authorities in the county. Brad's here to answer any questions you may have on accepting the annual FY two thousand and twenty-three CRA report.
Mr. Brad, anything?
Just, if you have any questions.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, or I don't know what the name of it is. It's the street north of, uh, Main Street, uh,
Broad.
Right there on the corner, uh, the little house.
Broad.
It's one of the pitches in there on the corner of, um, it's Washington on this side. It's, um, Hopkins on the other side, but it's one block north of, uh,
Main Street.
Right, huh?
Main Street, Broad Street is the next.
Is it Broad Street?
Broad Street.
That little house, it used to be the, uh,
There's a law.
The foundation for the hospital.
Oh, the hospital.
Well, what is that now?
It's owned by a, a engineer.
Okay.
I think it's owned by Woody Rice, but I think it's an engineer that's occupying it.
Okay.
Uh, CRA did give him a grant to fix, uh, some.
It has changed over. It looks really, really nice.
Yes, sir.
But I don't see anyone, any activity when I pass through there.
Um, he, he works, there, there, I think he has a, a team of two or three people that works with him.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, any cards on something like that? And that means?
Move to accept the fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three annual report for the City of Titusville Community Redevelopment Agency and approve the transmittal of the report to the CRA's commu- creating municipality.
Second.
To meet the, uh, the thirty-first deadline.
Okay. Second?
I have a motion, motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. City Manager?
Onto twelve C, which is Cumberland Farms Underground Storage Tank. Jesse Wright, the CEO of California Retail Properties Corporation, is requesting the city's involvement in a dispute with Cumberland Farms property located at thirty-five oh five South Hopkins Avenue and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Enclosed, uh, for council's information is the letter sent from Brevard County Natural Resources Management Department. On March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, TEC approved a motion to, quote, "recommend to City Council that they request to the FDEP that the matter's resolution be expedited for the safety of the citizens that are, may be impacted in this area." Staff is here to answer any questions, and what we're asking you is advisability to bring this back as an agenda item in a future meeting, should you choose to do that or not.
Um, when we have a situation like this, we, we lean on FDEP for one, correct?
Yes, sir. The FDEP is the regulatory agency for remediation of environmental, um, spills.
And the, uh, Brevard County Natural Resources Management Department?
They're the ones that have been delegated by FDEP to manage this particular project.
And being delegated by FDEP, the NRMD reports monitoring data received February twenty-second, twenty-four, submitted to this facility. The deliverable is acceptable and demonstrates that the work was satisfactory performed, and there were some things to be addressed, which are being addressed. But that being said, uh, our, our agencies are not saying that there's anything we can, or, and really, there's nothing we can do.
Sir, it appears that the state regulatory agency that deals with remediation is actively involved with this, as well as the Brevard County Natural Resources Management Department, which is the overseer of the project.
And I, I would not want to, um, uh, de-emphasize the concern that the citizen has, uh, Jesse Wright. Um, and he has certainly been dealing with this, as I understand it, uh, from, correct me if I'm wrong here, but this has been something that's going on since the eighties?
It was discovered in two thousand and four when the tanks were being replaced?
And this was the eighties is when they, they put the tanks in. It's been a while. Okay, we'll, we'll just go with two thousand and four. That's twenty years ago. Um, and again, the bottom line is, we, we turned it over to the FDEP, and they are saying at this time that the standards are met, and, and that we can't just suddenly say, well, we don't think so. So with that, uh, Member Nelson?
To me, this is different. Remember when we did the letter to FWC about the manatees?
Yep, yep.
And to me, this is, this is totally different. There we knew there was a problem. Here, we don't even know if there is a problem, what the problem is, what the extent of the problem is. Um, you know, I don't mind writing letters of support if we really perceive there's a problem, but here, we don't know whether there's a problem or not, and it is being addressed. FWC really wasn't addressing it. So to me, those are two different issues.
I also think it's a good point to point out that we don't just say, well, we don't know, so we don't care. That's not the case.
No.
When we had the manatee tragedy, um, I actually got a chance to meet Coach P, our state representative at the time, had a lot to do with setting us up, but we made the calls. I made the calls. We met with Flor- uh,
Right.
FWC and some executives up there. Then they sent a representative and answered questions. Now, did, you know, everybody agree with the answers? Well, he is kinda the expert. In this case, I agree with you. There's nothing more we should or could legitimately do, uh, with the answers that we have right now from the research of FDEP. Uh, Member Nelson, you're still there. Okay. Member Stokel?
Yep. To, uh, Member Nelson's point, that's kind of where I was leaning to. I, I'm still really not sure what we would be doing inserting ourselves. It's been very unclear. I know we've probably all been copied on some emails. Uh, I don't, from what I know, it's Cumberland Farms and Jesse, and they're going back and forth about some issue, and it looks like they, FDEP's already involved, and they're, so I'm just not sure what we would be doing at this point. Again, if we had more clear information, maybe we would do something, but I, I, I'm just, I don't feel comfortable doing something when I'm not sure what we would be doing.
I think it's really well put, and that, not really sure what our role would be. Uh, as you said, it's, um, the, the owner of that area, the, the Titusville mall situation, and certainly he's trying to do diligence. I'm not saying he's not, but I am saying that this has been a, a, a legal battle. Is that correct to say that? A legal battle or some sort of battle anyway, between him and Cumberland Farms, back and forth and back and forth? FDEP is the referee. They've gotten in there and made a decision. And then we even have the Brevard County aspect of this with the, um, um, NRMD. They're in there. What would we possibly do? We don't have a department for that. So that being said, I, I, I don't see what else we do with this. Uh, Member Cole?
Yeah, I agree with all the comments. I don't think that we are in a position or have the information to challenge the results that FDEP has come up with. So I'm not sure that involving us in it would be helpful in any aspect of it.
Uh, City Manager, do you have enough there? Do we need to, you know, I think it's pretty clear that, uh, we don't feel like we have any.
Cards?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't feel like we have any, uh.
So what I, what I hear is you don't wanna proceed with advisability to bring it back as an agenda item?
I don't see what our role would be or, or, uh, why we need somebody more than the FDEP, 'cause that's who we would be calling to say, what do you think? That's, to me, the biggest thing. Okay, we get in there. What do we do? Well, FDEP, what do you think? Well, we've already told you what we think.
Yes, sir.
So I, I feel like that we are where we need to be with this.
Okay.
Are we good?
We're good.
Okay. City Manager?
Uh, petitions and requests?
Yeah, come on.
Little fellow fell asleep.
There you go. Yeah. Get that.
Okay. Hi, my name is Thomas Keen. I'm the manager of the Titusville mall. I'm here on behalf of Jesse because he's out of state right now, and he's asking me if we could move a meeting to a later date in, in, um, April, when he'll be back, because he would like to address the issue.
Um, and certainly we, we, and I'll, I'll get with, uh, City Manager on this, et cetera. Um, was this brought to you beforehand or something? This seems like cart behind the horse or something, because, uh, this wasn't tabled.
Uh, we received a, a letter from Mr. Wright to staff today that said he's not gonna be in town, but the, the item came to you from your TEC.
Mm-hmm.
TEC brought it. Mr. Wright didn't bring it.
Correct.
So I don't know that Mr. Wright can say, um, you know, 'cause I, I certainly get that, um.
The, the reason staff brought this to you is because your TEC made a recommendation to you.
Well, then, could, if that's the case, would he need to go back to the TEC and say, could you bring it again? Or, or, I, I'm, I'm not sure how to handle that. The bottom line is, uh, you know, it, it, it's really, he would, he would be able to speak on it, but he's not the one that brought it. He went to TEC to have them bring it, and he would have certainly, he didn't have to be here, like he wasn't, uh, and I didn't realize he wasn't gonna be. Um, but, uh, he would have a right to stand up like you are and have three minutes to speak.
Mm-hmm.
But he wouldn't be the presenter, and this wouldn't be, you know, it is about his property.
Right.
Or, or his area, but it's not him presenting. Uh, and I, I, really, no matter what we do, I have no doubt we'll hear from him. He says he wants to hear it again, but, um, right now, uh, the answer would be the same, that the FDEP is the seconding body, not us. So, um, on guidance, what, what's the proper protocol?
I think you answered it correctly, sir.
Say me again, I'm sorry?
You answered it correctly.
All right. At this time, we're gonna hold, and I'm sure we'll hear from him about trying to bring it back. Um, truthfully, I feel like I've talked to Jesse plenty of times about this, that everything that, that we just, I even brought up points for Jesse, 'cause I know Jesse would say this, and he would say that, and I get that, but the bottom line is, it's, it's not a Titusville issue, a, a City of Titusville government issue. It's a deferred to the FDEP. They made an issue, made a decision, and then went in the county, um, that entity, and I lost that spot now, but anyway, uh, so at this point, I appreciate you stating that, and we're going to hold on, on doing that. I think the protocol is that, uh, the TEC brought it before, so they'd have to have tabled it or, and request to have it come back.
Okay.
But I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other petitions or requests? Uh, Mayor's Report. Thank you, uh, City Clerk, for putting this in front of me, or I would have forgotten it. Uh, I need City Council authorization, uh, to present a proclamation to proclaim April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four Earth Day at the April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four regular City Council meeting. So, um.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Uh, request for proclamation, uh, to proclaim April twenty-second Earth Day has been passed. Uh, request authorization to present a proclamation to proclaim April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four as National Arbor Day at the April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four regular City Council meeting.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say yes?
Yeah.
Opposed? Passes. Both of those pass from the Mayor's Report. Um, I will move over to Member Nelson and let her go first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is just an FYI. I was talking to an older lady. Um.
Uh-oh. Older than you. Older than you, Harmon.
And, uh, we were talking about the crime statistics that people keep spouting on TV. And what she told me is, crime is rampant. I'm scared to death. She's sleeping with a gun. And I said, really? I said, crime is down. So I guess my FYI is for people who are listening, I'm gonna call them talking heads on TV, who are spouting nonsense. Uh, please, you know, check. You know, get on the internet. She does have the internet. She could use it. Get on the internet and look, because our crime stats are down.
Thank you for saying that.
All over the nation, not just Titusville, but all over the nation, and she is living in fear. And it's, it's sad and is not necessary. So for the people out there, please, please, you know, um, don't look at one, one TV network and take everything they say as a gospel truth, because it may be, it may not be. Go do some research. Don't live like that. So I just wanted to say that, because I really like this lady, and it made me sad.
Well, well said.
Yeah.
Member Cole?
I just wanted to make an announcement that our YMCA is sponsoring a prayer breakfast on Friday morning. Uh, there used to be a prayer breakfast in Cocoa, which they have no more. So I think it's been about five or six years. So we decided to have our prayer gr- prayer breakfast. It's Friday at the Grove Church, seven-thirty. Uh, Sheriff Wayne Ivy is the speaker, and I, I think everyone on City Council will be there except me, 'cause I'm out of town, but I helped put it on. But it's, it's, we've done very well as far as selling tables. There'll be quite a few people there, so hopefully everyone will enjoy it. And I'm just saying this for the benefit of the public, to know that there is a prayer breakfast Friday morning at Grove Church at seven-thirty.
Thank you very much. Uh, Vice Mayor?
What, what?
We're, we're in the, end of the meeting, stuff.
You're not as old as you are, so.
Our, our rhythm was thrown off today.
Yeah, our rhythm, uh, I didn't.
Sir, could I get you to put your microphone on?
Oh, microphone, microphone.
I've been getting a few other things together, and, uh, I haven't, uh, been, uh, it's been kinda slow since the last meeting, not a whole lot going on, uh, and just, uh, trying to prepare for some things that are lying in the future.
Very good. Moving right along. Uh, Member Stokel?
Yes. A couple items. I'll make up for you guys. Um, one, just, just FYI, our next.
One, just, just FYI, our next Space Coast League of Cities on April eighth, Tim Bobanek, supervisor of elections, is our guest speaker. He should be giving updates now that session is over on elections and anything that we may need to know regarding that, so I thought that was interesting, wanted to share with you guys. Had the opportunity last Saturday to participate in the Pilot Club's fashion show.
She did great.
Member Nelson was there, yes. It was a sold-out, benefiting to local organizations, Boys to Men with Purpose and Fighting Edge, so was very happy to participate and volunteer for that. The mayor and I actually got to attend a park dedication for Val Steel down in South Brevard, it was a drive.
We never get down there either.
I know.
It's beautiful down there, I mean, it really is, I just don't, Melbourne Beach, way down, I don't get down there much.
Yeah, it was, it was nice. And then, lastly, part of my participation in the county's ELI program, we did a three-day retreat, and one of the days, you may have seen it on Facebook, we were over at Ties That Bind by Indian River City Methodist Church, if you remember, if you were on council, we actually approved that ropes course, challenge course, several years back, and so that was my first time to be there. It was very cool, you don't have to do, like, the high climbs that I did, just want to throw that out there, but the owner did reach out to me and said that he would like to offer council if we wanted to go take a tour, free of charge, to kind of see what's going on. From my understanding, there's nothing like that in Brevard County. I was very impressed, I had attended one in Oviedo before, and he said, oh yeah, I owned that one, and I was like, because we used to have to travel for it. I had no clue it was back there, so in addition to the high beams and everything, there's different activities, and so I said I would bring it before council to see if you guys would be interested in us getting a tour and seeing their facilities.
Very nice, he, pastor actually called me and told me you were going to say something, so for me to just say second.
Yes.
Except I likely will walk the course as you're flying high.
Well, that's, that's fine.
Okay, a couple things real quick, Parish Foundation, Parish Medical Center, I'm not sure which officially it is, helped put on a mental health football clinic, J.T. Hassel and his team at Gibson on Saturday morning, and I was blessed to be able to speak at that, Robert did as well, so that was kind of cool. Then I went to the Sheriff Department Awards, I tell you what, we got heroes all over the place, our police department, you know, they, they did a really great video presentation of every award winner, and everybody, I mean, man, talk about life and death, just, you just leave their film. Then, a pretty special one, a former cheerleader at Titusville High School, a business owner in Titusville now, won't get into names and all that for the reasoning here, but her husband put on a ring the bell party for her because she is a cancer survivor, and this was, I, I've never heard of one, she hadn't either until then, but there was, there was tears in everybody's eye, everybody's eyes, because at the end, they called everybody up, not just her to ring the bell, anybody who had survived cancer to ring the bell, there's like twenty people across there. It was this very special life moment, that, you know, it's, it's just good to be alive and, and enjoy it. So just some really cool stuff going on around, you make sure we got it all, yeah, and the fact that a football clinic, or mental health, mental wellness, was based around a football clinic, wow, that was really cool. So with that, City Manager?
Yes, sir, and I'd like to also thank those that attended the student advisory leadership workshop that we conducted last week.
That was great, that was...
I've got one action item and a couple information items for council to consider. If you can pull out your calendar, since we completed the CAFER tonight, it's time to do the budget. So the budget workshop and public hearing dates are listed in your packet, and if I could get consensus on those dates, we give you a primary and a secondary of those dates.
For the budget workshop, it looks like it's August fifteenth or August eighth, I would like to request August eighth, because August fifteenth is during the Florida League of Cities Conference, and it will be down in South Florida, so for anyone that's attending that, we would miss, so.
You, you requested which one, I'm sorry?
August eighth, if possible, because the fifteenth.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm good either way.
Okay.
So.
It looks like five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
All right, City Manager?
You got to do the public hearing as well?
Yep.
Yep, and the final public hearing, yep.
Always like, I prefer Thursday over Wednesday.
I prefer Thursday over Wednesday, that's a wild joke.
Yeah.
Church.
Thursday at five-thirty, September, what?
Yes, sir.
That works for me.
So the twelfth of September at five-thirty?
At five-thirty.
How do you guys know all these dates?
I, I pulled out my paper planner over here.
And this is called the budget, what part?
Okay, this is the first hearing, we've got the workshop, which is scheduled right now for eight August at five PM, and the first public hearing recommendation by two members is the twelfth of September, which is a Thursday at five-thirty.
Wow, Harmon, I got a notification. I don't, not you accepted.
Good, good job.
You added it to the calendar, apparently.
Harmon's up there.
I'm updating our calendars right now, okay.
All right, what's the next thing?
Looks like September twenty...
So, are we going ahead and lock in first hearing at twelve September at five-thirty?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, and the public hearing, the two options, again, are Wednesday and Thursday, twenty-five September, twenty-six September at five-thirty.
September twenty-six, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Twenty-six, five-thirty?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, just to recap, workshop now is set for eight August at five, first hearing twelfth September at five-thirty, and the public hearing, the final public hearing is the twenty-sixth of September at five-thirty. The additional information for you is the Titusville Tomorrow Community Meeting is scheduled to be held on March twenty-eighth at the Harry T. Moore Center, and then also the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellent in Financial Reporting is listed there for you. We've got one additional item, a result of the legislature, there was some changes made to the live local legislation, so staff is working to change our ordinance, to make those adjustments, and to clean up any other items that we found that may be loopholes that we need to take a hard look at. So we'll be coming back to you with your live local ordinance with those changes, I just wanted you to be aware that that's, that's in the works.
Anything else?
Subject to your questions.
City Attorney, anything?
Just one item of information, an update, the Apollo Gardens, that was mentioned earlier, I believe, the first meeting, that lawsuit was noticed, we received a notice of voluntary dismissal without prejudice, so that complaint has been dismissed, and I provided a copy of that for your information. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but that litigation is concluded at this time.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Your estimate was spot on.
Yeah, we are.
It was.
You guys want to come up and talk again? No? Okay.
You've never gone out this early.
No, this is it, we did it, look at it.
I know.
Okay. All right, with that, appreciate that, let me do, let me just do say, next meeting, Vice Mayor will run, don't make it short like this, make it real long.
Yeah.
I will be in St. Louis, I always go to St. Louis for the St. Louis Cardinals Opening Day, this is different, because we normally come home Sunday, not later than Monday, well, Tuesday is the eclipse, and it goes right over St. Louis, and I told my wife, I said, I am not going to miss that one, I have a once-in-a-lifetime to see that, so we are going to be seeing the eclipse, I'm concerned about getting back, because apparently the air flights are going to be a mess coming back at it. So after the eclipse, we head to the airport, and I'll be here Tuesday night, I don't think I'll be back in time for the meeting, but I'll be back Tuesday night, so I just wanted to say that, and that'll be pretty exciting. So, guys, appreciate you, dismissed. Nope, adjourned.